A public hearing, as required by law, we are doing a public hearing on the veterans tax exemption. At first, we will have a presentation and that will be called an opportunity for anyone to ask questions. And so with that, I will give you two minutes.
I'll say the pledge.
We are supposed to say the pledge.
Oh, for sure, yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Yes, I forgot that.
Thank you to the people.
All right.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Exactly. The purpose tonight is for our public hearing on the veterans' property tax exemption. So I will go through the presentation and any questions at the end I can answer. I will go through this relatively quickly because it's the same thing that everybody has pretty much seen and it's very detailed, admittedly, so I need to also credit Dave Mano, our town assessor, and Nancy Di Renardo, Erie County Real Property Tax Services. They're the ones that really came up with the information in this presentation. Unfortunately, Nancy's out of town, she couldn't make it tonight, so you are stuck with me handling the hearing, unfortunately. So, everyone probably knows by now, it's a new law. It was signed by the governor back in December of 2013, and it allows school districts to opt-in for the veterans' tax exemption, just for school tax purposes. It is up to the Board of Education to pass a resolution on this, and the resolution is on today's regular business meeting, it's item 1H for new business. There's three types of veterans exemptions. I won't read into the details of each of these, but there's the alternate veterans, there's also the pro-rata eligible funds, and there's also the Cold War. So, what can school districts opt-in? It's the alternative of veterans, is what the law is based on, and those with the pro-rata or eligible funds can apply, and it's not applicable to the Cold War veterans. And a school district does not have to adopt the same exemption level as a town or county, and the exemption amounts are multiplied against our equalization rates. So, just an example, if we're at 50% equalization, which Amherst does not, we're now at 97%, and if we looked at group C, Level C, which is what the board had decided upon a couple meetings ago to look at, of $6,000, $10,000, and $20,000 cap, the cap, because of the equalization, would be just half of that, 3, 5, and 10. Okay, so for that particular group or Level C, a non-combat vet would be eligible for $6,000, combat vet is eligible for an additional 4, but a maximum of 10, that's where the 10 comes in, and a disabled vet is eligible up to $20,000. Again, Amherst's equalization rate is 97%. Just running through a couple examples here. With the 97% equalization and the group or Level C at $6,000, $10,000, and $20,000, the cap amount would be $5,820, $9,700, and $19,400. An assessed value property of $130,000, and if they qualify for the combat vet exemption, it would be 25%, or $9,700, whichever is less. So based on that $130,000 assessed value, 25% would be $32,500, it exceeds that cap of $9,700, so the exemption would be the lesser of the two, the $9,700. So their new taxable value for their property would be $120,300, as opposed to that full $130,000 of value. So the effect on the school budget is basically it redistributes the levy to those without the exemption. The STAR reimbursement amount for the school district, it could be less, we did base it on this year's numbers, and Real Property told me based on a Level C, it would reduce our STAR by $3,556. So, an example of a school tax bill, two parcels in the district, both assessed for $130,000 with the equalization rate of 97%, and no exemption. The taxable values for the school district, $1,507,777,000. The school district tax levy for this current year is $34,153,763. So again, based on no exemption, both parcels have no exemption, that's the tax bill for $130,000 assessed value property. For C, again, just restating the same thing, our school levy is still $34,153,000, that doesn't change. What would change is the tax bills for one with the exemption, you can see here, it would be a $205.27 decrease and a $15.60 increase in a property without the exemption. You can see it has an effect on the rate. Again, just restating our STAR savings that we currently have for this 15, 16-year basic and enhance. And with that, I will take any questions if anyone might have.
Well, I have a question. I wasn't sure from your presentation about the loss of State aid.
Right, that's the STAR, the STAR aid. $3,556, so basically that portion would go into the levy, that would go into the overall taxes that are collected. So it would be less money coming from the state, $3,556 less coming from the state in the form of STAR, and then the taxpayers would be paying that different, that $3,000.
Including the veterans?
Yes, yes, it would be spread all over.
And that amount, what is the actual cost of the exemption?
Well, the actual cost of the exemption to the overall district, right now, is based on that number that we listed up here, it's seven. It's hard to tell because there are people that can apply, that we don't know of, but based on what Nancy assessed at that time when she did the information for the presentation for us, there was $7,691,275 in assessed values of veterans that would qualify for this. So the district as a whole, we're still levying, we're levying the same amount, so the district will still collect the same amount in taxes, it's just redistributing among the taxpayers. So it really depends on the assessed value of your property, how much more you would pay versus what you're paying now. Okay, I hope that answers your question.
This is assuming all veterans are going to sign up for it?
Yes, yes, they don't have to. They have by March 1st to apply for this.
Yeah, well, I have a question. I think I know the answer, but I want to ask the question anyway. Widows of veterans, are they eligible or not?
I don't believe they are, no, no. It is only the veterans themselves.
Well, there could be two, I suppose.
I can double check on that, but I haven't heard that they are. It's only for the veterans.
Somebody asked me that a couple weeks ago, I didn't know the answer to.
Well, if I could just add, if you've already signed up, I mean, the town already has its own veterans exemption, so if a person has signed up for that already, this is why we know people would automatically qualify.
Yes, they don't have to redo it every year.
It's not a separate signup process for the school exemption. They would automatically get it, it's part of the same process with the town.
That's correct, that's correct, yes. Any other questions? Okay, well, again, it's on the agenda, it's item 1H for new business.
And you did a very nice job, even if...
I'm sure Nancy would have done something better.
Nancy was, here you did an excellent job, thank you very, very much. Okay, then we need a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion.
All those in favor of adjourning the public hearing?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Now, we have a little bit of time between now and 7:00. Do we have to wait until 7:00?
Well, it was to start at 6:30, the hearing, and we did not stipulate that the regular meeting starts at 7:00.
Interesting point.
I might suggest, I think, John, we might be able to jump to the middle school and change the agenda, have that presentation, and the high school kids don't look like they're here, and now we'd come back with other budgeting too. Okay?
Excellent. All right, well, then, we will, we have no visitors wishing to speak, and no written communication, are the reports of special committees? Then we turn it over to the superintendent's report, and as Dr. Fraser suggested, we will start with the middle school update, that's all right to do.
Glad we talked earlier, didn't we? Right guy.
So we'll just need to switch to your Google Drive there, I was just looking.
Yes, it's up there.
Mr. Crombie's five, I just did the presentation nicely.
Yes, may or may not be by design, I don't want to forget that one.
Yeah, what do you think on that? Should I go with this?
Go for it.
Oh, I know why it doesn't. The thumb drive, the thumb drive.
The fob is in the handle.
It's in the handle of that. I apologize.
It's okay.
Fortunately, we have a expert.
That's right, we've got the right guy here.
Next to Deb's wife, having double duty.
See what I got here, folks. See what I got. Testing. Okay. Exit that, keep the full screen.
Who's drop-down is that? Is that yours or is that?
Maybe.
I don't know. I haven't got that out. It's one of the ones on the side, I think. Brandon, you got any? Otherwise, we'll just leave it there. We'll go with this, I think we'll, one more try from Brandon, otherwise we'll get rolling here. Yeah, not worth it.
Fair enough.
You got it?
I'm gonna do it old-fashioned, there we go.
Okay.
Notice a different color scheme, all the text is the same from what you had. Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here tonight. As always, it's an absolute pleasure to come before you whenever we get the opportunity. We'll cut right to the chase with our mission statement. Those of you that know anything about our school, which is pretty much everyone at this table, and about me personally, and Mr. Crombie know that we hold this mission statement in the highest of regards. Simply put, we are here to nurture and educate the children of this district to their highest potential. That said, we will go through everything you asked us to discuss, which are those three points there, with that in mind. We'll begin tonight with the showcasing of what we have going on at Amherst Middle School currently. And there are two sort of larger topics that we'll focus on, and then we'll present a little bit of a laundry list to you. So the first larger topic is all that is at play right now in the realm of safety, and Mr. Crombie is going to get things started with that.
Thank you, Mr. Greizmer. But before I begin, you know, as parents, we expect when we send our kids to school, they go to school and gain a safe learning environment. As the educational leaders of AMS, Mr. Greizmer and I not only expect that for our own children, but the 700 children that we inherited when we said yes to take in our post here at the middle school. And with that being said, you know, it still remains our number one priority. We are proud of this year's safety enhancements. As always, we will have two unannounced lockdown drills this year, and under the recommendation of APD, the second of the two of those unannounced lockdowns taking place will be held at an inconvenient time, such as the lunchroom possibly, or the changing of classes, because you never know when an emergency may go down and we need to prepare our folks for that particular situation. In addition, we will have one accountability check fire drill. New York State mandates us to have 12 throughout the year, and one of those 12 this year, this coming spring, after I meet with our safety committee, we will have an accountability check, which means we will take attendance and account for every student and every faculty team member during that fire drill, before we either enter back in the building, or if it's a real emergency, it'll better prepare us to possibly go to a different evacuation site if need be, or implement our parent communication plan, which means if parents have to come pick their sons and daughters up and grandchildren up, we'll have a plan in place, and this will help us, you know, go forward with that. In addition, as you hopefully all know, next week, we will have a parents-only information night, next Thursday, February 11th at 6:30, hosted here at Amherst Middle School, and we'll have folks from the National Center of Exploited and Missing Children, Amherst Police Department, and the Roswell Parks Tobacco Free in Erie and Aggra, and with the assistance of our PTSA. And now, this particular event is not only for our Amherst community, but the word is spread, getting out to our neighboring districts, because you know as well as I do, our students, our kids, you know, interact with students all over Western New York, especially Sweet Home, Williamsville, you know, and our surrounding areas, so they will also be invited to come here to our building on February 11th at 6:30. Now, the next two slides that you will see, and I'll have an opportunity to talk about, actually are rooted in parent suggestions and teacher suggestions, and myself, Mr. Greizmer, and others allocated resources to make these changes this upcoming year. If you notice, up at the front of our building, we have added cones and a yield for pedestrian signs for our crosswalk area, and if you have ever been to a dismissal at our Amherst Middle School, it's, you know, more and more parents every year are driving their kids for a variety of reasons, and, you know, we need to respond to that. So we made some safety changes, as you see here, and as I take my post day in and day out, outside of our, you know, middle school during dismissal, you know, I can confidently say, these changes have increased the safety of our students. All right, in addition, you may have seen in the back of the building, we've also enhanced the bus fleet parking configuration, and it is now angled instead of perpendicular, I don't know if you can see the lighting here, but clearly angled on your left, this is the present-day new configuration, and this, the yellow lines here are the old configuration. And what that has, we also eliminated the practice of reserving spots for our buses. So now they come in from, and park right to left, they have a sign up front of the bus windows, so our students know where to go, and it's a small enough fleet of buses where it doesn't add more confusion, but it does increase safety in the following ways. Number one, it allows the opportunity for students to board the bus, you know, as you see here on the left, without the increased risk of buses filing in in their designated areas.
Just a number one.
Okay, and secondly, it allows the opportunity for our bus fleet to simply, from right to left, move forward and exit our building in a forward manner, in lieu of when they used to be in this configuration with the yellow lines, having to back up and kind of kitty-corner themselves out and drive away, which could only cause the possibility of an accident behind them as they back up, one by one. So, this definitely paid dividends in the safety world for our students and staff and everybody else that utilizes that parking lot that time of day.
The second major category that we want to showcase here tonight is the district-wide Chromebook initiative, and we have benefited in a very big way quite recently. But backing up a little bit, I think you'll all recall that our building-level committee endeavored down a two-year plan to get towards a gradual release, one-to-one model, funneling up into the high school. So we would start with the sixth grade, ended having a bridge year from the elementary, where there were home book carts in every classroom, and then in seventh and eighth, the vision was, children would pick up their Chromebook at home base, take it with them all day, like the old three-ring binder or trapper keeper, right, bring it back to home base, at the end of the day, they would charge and the process starts again, leading them up to Mr. Pigeon's group, which would perhaps be the more ultimate one-to-one, where you actually take them home. So we had that plan nicely packaged. Could you turn the slide? Then the Smart Schools money hit, and this fall, we got quite a few Chromebooks, much earlier, a year in fact, earlier than we expected. And I am very happy to say, at this moment, as of last week, not only does every single core teacher in sixth grade have a cart of Chromebooks, but the same is true in seventh, and now the same is true in eighth, in addition to all special education teachers, all AIS teachers, and any off-team folks who have requested them. So we now are blanketed, which is going to cause our committee to take another look at what we established last year, because, you know, the parameters have changed. If you add into that the recent retirement of our superintendent and director of technology, we have good reason to sort of come together this summer, perhaps next fall, take another look at our plan, see where everyone wants to go, and move forward. But we are sitting very nicely, and to a great surprise, right now with Chromebooks. Well, please, me to the next slide, you're probably wondering, okay, you've got all these devices, what on earth is going on with them? And it really boils down to three big pieces in my mind. Google Classroom is starting to take off, so much so, it was the focus of our superintendent's conference day. This program within our Google platform really encourages seamless communication between teachers and students, and students to students. Papers, assignments, quizzes can be pushed out in an organized fashion through cyberspace, given to each child, dumb, pushed back to the teacher, graded, dialogue, back and forth, shared with another student, back and forth. I mean, it is this online file cabinet that Google has in essence perfected, and our students are using that, and teachers using that, more and more and more each day. Secondly, and this is really a beautiful thing, with this uptick in numbers, we have really established a climate where you go into most classrooms in this building, and every child has in front of them the information universe. We no longer are we saying, we've got five, and you each can have five minutes looking at the universe, right? Or we've booked the library for a week, we can have it for five days, now, in front of each child, anything from any teacher that you need to find, that we all know we can do from our living rooms at this point, can now be done in front of pretty much everyone at all times at Amherst Middle School, which is a pretty big deal, and thank you all for your support in that initiative with the Smart Schools money, and even before that. And then thirdly, when we get to our AIS, our RTI, and our special education services, many of those teachers use very specific programs with very specific and individualized benchmarking abilities. And when you go back a couple of years, they too had to play that game of, I'm going to sign the carts out now, so that I can do the benchmarking for Johnny and Sue, right? Or I've got one the two of you need to share. Now, that ability to individually remediate, and individually benchmark, and individually assess, with all of them having carts, has grown leaps and bounds. The teacher gets back immediate feedback, whether it's AmesWeb or eDokTrina, the student gets back individualized feedback, and the parents can get back individualized feedback very, very quickly and very, very often. So, again, we remain ever grateful for the fact that those devices have come inside our building, and I feel like we are really putting them to great use. Beyond those two big categories, I would remiss not to mention quite a few other things that are at play right now that we would love to showcase, that are essentially all brand-new this year. Our partnership with Boys and Girls Club is going wonderfully around the district. There is now an ENL club, I believe in every building, or at least the two elementaries and the middle school, whereby our English-as-a-new-language learners can go for an hour a day after school twice a week with their teachers to get caught up, build connections, start to understand what goes on at Amherst Middle School a little bit better. Wonderful opportunity. Number three, brand-new concept, I love it. We were approached by a professor at Buffalo State who in essence asked us, can I run my methods-level course in your building? Why? Well, it's a health and nutrition program, and I want my students not to get just the book knowledge from me, but I want them to put that into action. We will run a club for you. So my five, 10 kids will run a wellness club for you after school, and it will tie into the methods section of my course. Wonderful partnership idea. When we continue to think about all that goes into the wellness wheel, and fitness of our adolescents, and all of that sort of thing, this is a wonderful opportunity and a wonderful partnership. Our studio art folks have jumped into a program at the Darwin Martin House, where they will be working with docents, they will be learning about things at the Darwin Martin House, and then they will put their learning into action, and host a night for parents, teachers, board members, administrators, at the Darwin Martin House, where they will be giving the tours, which is another phenomenal opportunity. We have an alumnus coming back, Sam Sucks, his mother actually teaches with us, is a graduate of our district, wildly accomplished bassist, who's at Yale right now for a PhD in music. He is going to come back, do a master's class with our kids in the morning, and perform with them on stage at the District Orchestra Festival in March, which is going to be phenomenal. We added the honors designation to Algebra and Earth Science, which in essence gives them the weight akin to what honors classes get in the high school, which sort of levels the playing field for children who decide to take that jump in middle school. Up to this point, they were at a little bit of a GPA competitive disadvantage compared to their peers who waited to take it in high school when they could grab the waiting factor. So we leveled that. We're running Washington DC again, thanks to all of your support. We've got a Twitter account up and running, and we've decided, going right in line with the third thing you asked us to talk about with data-driven instruction, to celebrate our data, and to be transparent, and to acknowledge any deficiencies. So in the principal's conference room, we now have created some data walls where we're going to be sort of making everything out there for all to see. We're going to transition, I believe, now to Aspen, which is what you also asked us to talk about.
But before I get into the wonderful world of Aspen, I want to take this opportunity to add one more showcase. Being a relatively new member to our AMS family, having the opportunity to work in two other districts, that provided me the luxury of having multiple perspectives. And I must say, the professionalism of our teachers, TAs, aides, clerical staff, custodians, is second to none. Second to none, hands down. The work ethic of our students, second to none. The collaboration with families and support from our families, second to none. And I am proud to say, because of all those variables, you know, Amherst Middle School, we are confident in this next statement, that it is the best middle school in Western New York. So I wanted to share that showcase really quick before we move on to the wonderful world of Aspen. Now, Aspen, it is a very robust student information system, as we all know. We use it daily, we love it, it is a big part of our day-to-day operations, such as master schedule and student schedules are built in Aspen, mass email communication to families is utilized quite often, and we could actually, you know, get down into a smaller group, such as certain grades, and even smaller than that if need be. Grade books, report cards, progress reports on our paper list, however, the, you know, families who would like a hard copy still have that option, which is important. Parent portal, meaning that parents, guardians have constant access to their students' progress based on the parent portal option of Aspen. And we have noticed an uptick in the following, the quiz and calendar features, as well as the teacher pages, as of late. And in this feature, the quiz and calendar, you know, assignments and quizzes can be posted and uploaded, the teacher pages, which is Aspen's version of our web pages, there's an uptick, and it, which is a good thing, is because we're a Google school and Google district, and works in concert with the Google platform, which is very important. And I'm proud to say, the TAs and aides now have access to Aspen as well, and they are better suited to meet the needs of our students.
All that being said, you know, I had a decision when designing this presentation. Some would argue you designed it so that it only points out the positive, but I, I'm a bit of a realist, and I strive for transparency, and therefore I injected this slide into the presentation to say, I believe that, you know, there is more work to be done in regard to Aspen and all that it can do. The standard stuff is going pretty well, but those last couple of points that Keith But I'm a bit of a realist, and I strive for transparency, and therefore, I injected this slide into the presentation to say, I believe that, you know, there is more work to be done in regard to Aspen and all that it can do. The standard stuff is going pretty well, but those last couple of points that Keith mentioned with the use of teacher pages, and the calendar application, and the Quizlet, all of which talk to each other, are pretty sophisticated elements of this program. And we are fortunate in this district to have created a model that has worked, okay? It's the A-Team model, where we have voluntary teachers who help us during some of the big days, superintendents, conference days, et cetera. But as I've seen people sort of wade their way through Aspen, and try to use these supplemental parts of the program, not the day-to-day, but the supplemental, it's kind of intense. And we all know the best kind of professional development is more frequent in shorter bursts. And so, I stand before you tonight to say that I'm committed to try and crack that code, to figure out a way that, whether it's on the district level, or just in this building of ours, that we can better serve our folks in that regard. Because it's not fair of me to ask that all of those things be utilized into their daily practice, without having that ability to pop in somewhere and say, hey, can you show me how this is going? I'm using it in my lesson tomorrow. And there is an answer, I'm just not quite sure what it is yet, and I'd love to be able to, again, stand here and say, I figured it all out, but I have not. Moving forward to the third and final part of what you all asked to see in this presentation, I'd like to talk to you for a few minutes about data-driven instruction, and how it's being conducted and utilized in the building. Very simply, let's start with what I believe to be its definition, and it is fairly simple, it is what it sounds like. Schools and teachers and administrators are challenged to take their data, look at it, and use it to change their practice. Pretty simple idea, look at your data, and make a change. So what we do in our building is, four times a year, pretty much at the quarter mark, our teachers get together and fill out a DDI protocol, based on some data point of their choice, some assessment, some unit, some essay, whatever, the door is pretty wide open on that. They typically work with their grade-level content partner, the two social studies seventh grade teachers, or they might work with their special education co-teacher to analyze the data that they teach together. Or, in a small department, they might work with their department-level colleagues, such as Career and Life. There are two teachers who service the whole building, they work together on these. We also use them at the middle school leadership team level, the DDI protocols, okay? And I would say, as this last line says, when people roll up their sleeves and get at this, the outcome is pretty good for both teachers and students. We give everyone in the building two options in terms of protocol. This is the original version, it's just a way for them to organize their thoughts, it involves taking a look at the data, coming up with questions, and then coming up with a solution. We then transitioned about two years ago to this as a second option. I tend to prefer it, it comes from the book Got Data Now What? And I like it, because it gets explicit about what people should be thinking as they're planning. On the leftmost side, they don't even want you to open the piece of data yet, they want you to sort of hypothesize about what you may see, what you're thinking about based on your practice, based on what you already know. Then they want you to open up, but they say, don't try and figure out why yet, just take apart the data, which is a pretty rich exercise, because most of us want to jump to, why is it happening? And so, we don't, the way this template works, you don't do that until you get to the rightmost part, which then says, okay, now start to figure out why. And the beautiful part is, what can we do about it? And the very last part is, what do we need to do to check to make sure what we've done is working? So Keith is gonna talk to you about one, seventh grade math example, and then I'll come back and talk to you about our middle school leadership team example.
Thank you, John. So, as you can see here, the members are Mr. Johnson and Mr. Mussolino, our seventh grade math teachers, working in harmony with Ms. Calusni here. So, they analyzed this particular dataset, polynomial question with distributive CLT, common-like terms in the world of alphabet soup, figure definition appropriate, and of course, negative numbers. So, these educators worked hard, analyzed this particular data, and this is what they discovered, this is what their analysis determined. The students have difficulty in distributing a negative number. In addition, applying the integer rules can be a struggle from time to time. So now what? What do you do with it? So they brainstorm, they figure out some adaptations to instruction, and they propose this following change in the moving forward piece. Continue to present student with multi-step problems to practice skills they are struggling with individually. They're gonna use POWs, which means Problems of the Week, and WRs, weekly reviews, as an opportunity for spiral review to reach mastery of these particular topics. So, this is that spiraling, that change of instruction in action. So you see here, this is your typical week of review, you have four questions. In the past, it would just be, this particular spot would be a continuation of this particular content, but now they're spiraling in where the areas of weakness is where. Giving those students another opportunity, ongoing opportunity, to eliminate or reduce that achievement gap in that particular area of weakness.
And this was their second quarter DDI, so they just turned this into me. So I'm curious to see what this yields for them, as they continue to grind away at this skill deficiency that they've noticed. Now, MSLT, or BLT, if you're familiar with it that way, our leadership team. You probably recall, we've had the same goal for two years, and that's because we absolutely love it. I think it's an absolutely beautiful goal. And that is, to try and make all students feel more meaningfully connected to Amherst Middle School. Because as the research suggests, when we start to feel more meaningfully connected, achievement scores tend to rise, right? Not to mention, you have a better school experience. So, we've hung with this goal for two years now, and what we did all last year is, we kind of had a year-long DDI look. So if you would go to the next slide. So we, as a middle school leadership team, looked at the 13, 14 assessments, and then this year, we added the 14, 15s, and we made some observations. We started to try and figure out why. And we realized that part of why could funnel into our goal, our mission statement, that perhaps not everyone is making those connections, not everyone is building those relationships, so what can we do? So, Keith, if you could go to the next slide. We put our nose to the grind, and we came up with something. But the point I should mention is, is that middle school leadership team and the faculty cannot exist in isolation. And I believe it's people like me and Keith who have to act as conduits. And so, for all of this work we did, I felt a tremendous responsibility to bring that to our faculty, and I did this fall. I shared all of this stuff, and we had it up on a Google Doc, here's what we've been working on, here's what we came up with, here's what we're thinking about doing, what do you think? And I think there are a few here, it worked with the technology, happy to say. We had about 70 people on the same Google Doc firing in suggestions in the solution column. And I was, I mean, I was elated. We had passed the information, and now everybody was taking a look at it, trying to figure out what we could do. From there, I brought that big teacher list back to MSLT, and we sort of whittled it down. What I am most proud of, and what we will end with tonight, is this box in the orange over here. Because these are substantive things that have come out of these discussions, trying to make individual subgroups of students, or in some cases, the whole student body, feel more connected to Amherst Middle School. And I am thrilled with how they're all going. Very quickly, Eye to Eye is a mentoring program with undergraduate students from Buffalo State, who have learning disabilities, mentoring students from Amherst Middle School with learning disabilities. It's going wonderfully. Half-day lunch option. We wanted to show our families that we understand sort of the hectic pace of the half-day, and what that does to a lot of households. We want to be there to say, we can give you some lunch walking out the door, when you think about the whole Maslow's hierarchy of needs and having children fed, right? You feel more connected, oh man, school's taking care of you. School's taking care of us, right? Number three, we do a tremendous job with orientations and getting-to-know-you events over the summer, and in the first week of school. But if you move here after that, you're at a pretty big competitive disadvantage in terms of making relationships and understanding what goes on in our school. So the suggestion was made, and I jumped all over it, that I meet with every single new family that comes in after that sort of orientation window, and that's what I've been doing. And it's been fantastic. Social awareness club. We have some students in our building who struggle to pick up on social cues, who struggle to interact with others, right? So what we do, we made a club, with a teacher who's gonna help run through those skills, help demonstrate, help role-play. And whether that helps them on the outside, or even internally in the club, they make more friends, what does that do? Makes you feel more connected to Amherst Middle School. Faculty-student basketball game, you are already intimately acquainted with that idea of, you know, playing against your teachers, cheering for them or against them, that helps for that overall camaraderie factor. This year, in a few weeks, we will embark down this road of the mid-year call or postcard effort. And that means, every single child in our building will get either a call or a postcard from one of the individuals in our building. Not getting all into that parent-conference-type information, but rather to say, thanks for being here, we're halfway through the year, we love that you're a part of our family, call us anytime, let's have a great second semester. Why? To build that sense of community, to build that sense of connectedness for the whole school, whether you're here from Iraq, from India, you grew up in Snyder your whole life, I don't care, we all are part of the same school. And then, lastly, as we looked at all of this, we have to make sure that the programming that we have running is doing what it can to let students achieve a measure of success, so they feel as though they belong here and can succeed here. And part of that comes to looking with a magnifying glass at the programming you have. You'll recall, last year, Mr. Cornell and I had a special education committee that met throughout the year to work on what we currently offer in that department. Well, after we concluded that process, this year, I started the AIS RTI committee, and we're doing the same thing. We're looking at our current programming, and we're looking at what else is out there, and we're seeing what we can do to maximize benefit for all students to, again, try to raise that level of connectedness, which will in turn raise student achievement. And with that, we've come to the end of our presentation, we're happy to take questions that I want to close by, again, thanking you for the privilege to help run this school, and for having Keith come here, too, he's great. So we'll take any questions.
How are the aides and assistants using Aspen?
Well, there's a couple ways. Whether they may pop in and have to do some of the daily administrative tasks of log-on, take attendance for their teacher, et cetera, that's part of the daily grind. But in a more practical sense, if we get to that point, and several teachers are, where Google Docs are being utilized, now remember, Google now talks to Aspen. So, if I'm here to help Johnny as a personal care aide, or I'm helping three students as a teaching assistant, and Mrs. Witten has pushed out some sort of Google Doc in Google Classroom, behind the scenes, it's beneficial for that TA or aide to be able to log in, to perhaps make the comment, to look over Johnny's shoulder and say, okay, I can pull that for you, et cetera. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it's that, it's the clerical, in addition to this new world we're moving towards, that has everyone doing things paperlessly in the classroom.
Thank you.
Is there a question about the social awareness club? That's very interesting. Is that just starting, or has that been going?
We piloted it in a very limited sense last year, and it was met with pretty significant applause from both the adults involved in running it, and the moms and dads at home, so much so that the calls began in the fall. Can you get that started again? And we had some work to do with that Eye to Eye program, which was run with Buff State, and so that took a little bit of the fall's time, but it was absolutely on the list of the things to start again, and it's up and running.
More sixth graders, or across the three grades?
It could be across the three grades. It's something that our counselors consider with a pretty critical lens, as to who is most appropriate for something like that. And of course, knowing the moms and dads involves having a conversation and saying, what do you think about this? Is this something that we as a team, for your child, think is a smart decision?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very thorough, thank you. Lots of good stuff going on. Do we have our task force, or?
Yeah, a crowd.
A crowd, let's bring them in. Then they can get back to homework.
They've been waiting patiently out in the waiting area.
Quietly, too.
While they were out, behind the doors.
Did you check my coffee, did you?
Thanks for going line up along the way down. Well, thank you, everybody, we have quite a crowd out there. It's always a distinct pleasure to spotlight the excellence at Amherst High School. We have a Student of the Month, Teacher of the Month program, and I am helped by a wonderful group of our student leaders, the pathfinders, who convene with me on a monthly basis and bring forward nominations of their peers and their teachers. I'm doubly excited tonight to start to begin to share that with Dr. Frazier, our wonderful teachers and students. So without further ado, we have December and January Student of the Month and Teacher of the Month, and I thought I'd start bringing in some pictures, because sometimes students can't make it, so you could at least place a name with the face. For December Students of the Month.
Okay. Pooja Prabakar was nominated as a Student of the Month by Ms. Sherry Surzak, Madame Di Lorenzo, and Mr. Gordon Crock. Ms. Surzak states that having served as Pooja's school counselor for the past three years, she has been able to witness firsthand her strong academic intellect and compassionate disposition. Driven, empathetic, and enthusiastic are the first three words that come to mind when she thinks of Pooja. Although she is very bright, Pooja is proud of all she has accomplished thus far, having worked hard to be within the top 10% of her graduation class. That being said, you will never see her shy away from seeking out support from her teachers. Subsequently, she has often spent hours with her teachers seeking clarification while also making a strong connection with them. Hence, well-respected by many of the teachers and staff at Amherst Central High School. Over the past few years, Pooja has proven to be a genuine and empathetic person. Therefore, when she stated that she wanted her future career field to be nursing, it seemed like the perfect choice. When you think about a nurse, you think of a smart, dependable, sympathetic person who is able to problem-solve efficiently and effectively, all while under extreme pressure. Pooja is all of this and more. She has been able to successfully balance her quite demanding course load each year, along with two part-time jobs and a variety of extracurricular activities. Ms. Surzak has been impressed with the way she used each experience and opportunity to help solidify her decision to become a nurse. Lastly, Ms. Surzak says that Pooja has been self-directed and self-motivated from the moment she met her. She is enthusiastic about the opportunities ahead, and what she can and will contribute at the college level and beyond. Madame Di Lorenzo states that Madal Pooja is just too sweet for words. I have had the true pleasure of having her in class all four years of her high school career. She is always involved, participatory, and positive. Her smile and chuckles are infectious. Mr. Crock stated that Pooja is one of his most dedicated students. She completes her work ahead of schedule so that she can do her best. She often conferences with me about her drafts, often after school, and is a model student. Congratulations, Pooja, for being chosen as one of December's Students of the Month.
Here's a picture that connects, she was working.
Is there another picture?
I can click that for you, you can go ahead and start reading.
All right. Aminuwa Kiani was nominated as a Student of the Month by Riley Sullivan and Mrs. Parisian. Riley and Mrs. Parisian state that Aminuwa is upbeat and outgoing personality, great sense of humor, and willingness to always help others. His friends frequently remark about how Aminuwa provided help to them in some way. Although Aminuwa was out of school for an extended period of time due to health issues, he returned to school with an overwhelming positive and eager attitude, ready to learn and to pick up where he left off. Aminuwa worked extra hard, while always maintaining his positive dedication to his schoolwork, and passed all of his exams after being out of school for five months. This is a testament to Aminuwa's motivation, dedication, and active desire to learn in these... This is a testament to Manny's motivation, dedication, and active desire to learn and be successful. Presently, Manny is planning ahead for another surgery that is scheduled in December. He is demonstrating confidence in the outcome of the surgery and sharing initiative in alerting his teachers of his upcoming absence as to plan and prepare for academic materials he may miss. Manny is well-deserving of this nomination. Congratulations, Aminuwa, for being chosen as one of December's Students of the Month. For December? Dr. Thomas Virginia was nominated as a Teacher of the Month by Cecilia Samski, Mr. Gregory Pidgen, and Ms. Michelle Bernardi. CC states that Dr. Virginia has a great sense of humor. He is always cracking jokes in class and keeps his students laughing. Dr. Virginia also has an infectious passion for the Latin language that keeps his students interested in learning. Mr. Pidgen states that Dr. Virginia has been very active with Latin Club and has been including Amherst students in regional and state Latin competitions for many years. Given Doc's great instruction and the quality of his program, we have had many regional and state champions over the years and to this day. Ms. Bernardi stated that Dr. Virginia dedicates so much out-of-school time to his students. Often found after classes working till very late, he often goes to many after-school functions to cheer on all students. He is willing to give up much of his free time to help students with lessons or even to teach an independent study. Congratulations, Dr. Virginia, for being chosen as one of December's Teachers of the Month. Mrs. Erin Rontree was nominated as Teacher of the Month by Louisa Zadorcek and Mr. Paul Spielberg. Louisa states that Mrs. Rontree is energetic and enthusiastic. Louisa still remembers a lot of the lessons she learned in class three years ago, like Mansa Musa, Mecca Mali Muslim, the five M's, and FFTT, Fishing, Farming, Transportation Trade. Mrs. Rontree cares deeply for her students and wants to help them succeed. Her passion for teaching history makes her classes fun and interesting. Mr. Spielberg states that Mrs. Rontree is always open to welcoming the ideals of cultural diffusion into her classroom. Her travels abroad and natural interest in the topic enable her to play, to better relate with her students. And her high classroom standards ensure that anyone in Mrs. Rontree's class will be on their way to becoming a globally aware citizen. She is an awesome colleague to work with in the history department and her energetic approach to teaching inspires many of her students to want to learn more about history. Congratulations, Mrs. Rontree, for being chosen as one of Amherst Student Task Force Teachers of the Month for December.
For January?
Uh, January Student of the Month. Huma Berusi was nominated as a Student of the Month by Mr. Mark Jones. Mr. Jones stated that Huma is currently enrolled in his Global Studies 10 course. He is a very thoughtful student who displays great effort, diligence, and care, both inside and outside of class. Huma is truly interested in history and global current events, often raising thought-provoking questions and leading discussions in class. He is sincere and friendly to all of his peers, making, making him a popular friend and group member. Huma is also one of the most thoughtful and polite students Mr. Jones has encountered in all of his high school this year. He is gracious, humble, and thankful for the opportunities that have been presented to him at Amherst High School, as well as the United States. As an immigrant, Iranian-American, and English as a new language learner, Huma has experienced more trials and tribulations at this age than many Americans will ever experience in a lifetime. His attitude and appreciation are infectious and truly make him a pleasure to have in class and as a member of our Amherst community. Mr. Jones feels it is his great pleasure to have Huma in his class and is well-deserving of this nomination. Congratulations, Huma, for being chosen as one of January's Students of the Month. Sarah Zaluski was nominated as a Student of the Month by Allison Kerr, Mr. Justin Pomelars, Mr. Paul Spielberg, and Ms. Christie Scalzo. Allison states that Sarah is always helpful during academic classes and willing to teach you what you need to know. During extracurricular activities, she is always learning with a smile and gives good vibes to whatever group she's participating in. Mr. Pomelars states that Sarah has a witty sense of humor and is always willing to help out her teachers and peers. She takes every opportunity to get involved, including all county additions, NISM Solos, and Alpharetta. Mr. Spielberg states that Sarah is actively engaged in AP Euro, offering good insight into the inspiriting of the historical process, as well as some, some good historical humor. She always brings both a smile to class and a quiet confidence in her abilities that he believes will serve her well as the AP exam approaches. Sarah also has a wonderful collection of pop culture T-shirts. Ms. Scalzo states that Sarah is a model student. She is bright, persuasive, engaged, and always gives her very best in class. She is the kind of student that is so easy to work with because she is involved in school and her academics is such a positive way. Sarah's attitude and hard work makes Amherst a better place. Congratulations, Sarah, for being chosen as one of the January's Student of the Month. Mrs. Stephanie Nardozzi was nominated as Teacher of the Month by Laura Bataglia and Mrs. King. Laura states that Mrs. Nardozzi is always willing to help and is always positive. She will find the time for her students no matter what she is already facing. She explains and goes over each question in depth. She cares about her students' future and success in life. She is not just a teacher, she is a mentor for all of her students. Mrs. King states that Mrs. Nardozzi is an incredibly valued member of the math department. She has taught multiple courses and levels in her years at Amherst and has become our resident calculus expert. Mrs. Nardozzi always goes above and beyond when it comes to helping her students and can often be seen working with them during her lunch, free period, and after school. Students feel comfortable asking her for help and she has always a friendly face in the hallways. We feel lucky to have her as our colleague and she is definitely deserving of Teacher of the Month. Congratulations, Mrs. Nardozzi, for being chosen as one of January's Teachers of the Month. Mr. John Heim was nominated as Teacher of the Month by Allison Kerr and Mr. Robert Clandini. Allison states that Mr. Heim has a great attitude during class and is always friendly with his "Have a good day" and "See you later" greetings. He is also always willing to help you with academic or other issues as well. Mr. Clandini states that Mr. Heim is a true professional and leader of our CTE department. He works tirelessly to make sure that all the many ways going on in our department get done. Mr. Heim has been instrumental in the creation of our Amherst academics program and the CTE technical endorsement strands. He is a fantastic teacher, colleague, friend, and a pleasure to work with. Congratulations, Mr. Heim, for being chosen as one of Amherst Student Task Force Teachers of the Month for January.
Congratulations to our students and teachers. We're very, very grateful for your efforts and your achievement at our high school and thank you for our task force, thank you for coming tonight.
This has been an unusual meeting. We started at 6:30 with a public hearing and our, our sheet for people to sign if they wanted to speak was taken at 6:30, but we realized that people may have come later and wanted to speak. So I would like to offer anyone the opportunity to, to speak for three minutes if they'd like at this time. We usually do this at the beginning of the meeting, but. Okay, great. Just tell me, you've got the.
Dr. Frazier, do you want to start with a few words or did you want me to? Just, just want to say that the budget's an ongoing process. I kind of describe it as fine-tuning. As the months go on, more and more information becomes available and we adjust. It certainly can be stressful. We believe we've got some pretty positive news with the governor's proposal and Melanie's going to present much more detail related to that.
Like we always say, it's a fluid process, the budget. We started usually in the fall, late fall, and at that point in time, we don't have a lot of information, obviously, from the state. And we move along with the process using some projections and some assumptions. And as we get more information, we include it in our budget and update it. So it's really a working document as we go through the process. Recently, we learned of the governor's proposal. That is reflected in tonight's presentation. But I'll just get right into it and I'll highlight the changes. What has changed since our last budget presentation to the board? So our revenues, the property tax levy. As everyone knows, our property tax levy is based on the tax cap formula. Couple things that came to light recently is we know that the final CPI figure is 0.12%. We also know that for Amherst, our tax-based growth factor is 1.0007. And we're awaiting some final figures for our exclusions. We do have a number in here right now, but we're looking at that a little closer. So that should be coming relatively soon. The next thing that changed is the state aid proposals that we received from the governor. Gap elimination is partially restored under his proposal. He initially signed in his state of the state address that he would be restoring the gap elimination, but later we learned it was over two years. So Amherst is getting a slice of the pie in 1617 with a greater slice of the pie remaining for 1718. However, there's some strong advocacy out there for the gap elimination to be completely restored in 1617 for school districts. There's even been some statements that the legislature will not agree to anything unless there is full restoration of the gap elimination. So hopefully, that will hold true. Again, more information is needed at this time. Building aid two is based on the governor's proposal. You'll see a large increase in our building aid for 1617. And that is mainly due, the state is anticipating that this current $23.8 million project that we're in, we will be able to file final cost reports and get the aid caught up on that project to where it should be. We're working with our financial advisors. We're working with our architect and also our construction manager to really try hard to get those final cost reports in. As long as they're in by the end of this December, the aid will flow as the governor is suggesting in his proposal. So we're working on that. It's a large increase, so we do want to make sure that the district can get those funds. Worst-case scenario, if the project is not done, what we can do is apply for what they refer to in advanced aid payment. Little bit of a process with that, nothing too difficult to do though, however, if there's just like some minor things outstanding with the project. So, there we go. Our projected revenues, these are the numbers that I calculated for you, you know, up here. Basically though, what I'd like to highlight on this page is that right now, with the numbers that we know for the property tax, that the CPI of 0.12, we need 1.0007 for the growth factor. We are looking at a tax decrease for next year. So that is equated into this. And then you can see the numbers for 1718 and 1819. Again, working with some assumptions, as we get closer to those timeframes, those numbers come into better focus. State aid, again, we're seeing a bit of an increase there, a little more than we originally projected because of the gap elimination being partially restored. Foundation aid is another piece. Foundation aid is grossly under the formula of where we should be, the calculation stand. We are receiving an $11,000 increase in foundation aid for next year. Amherst specifically, we're behind about $5 million in foundation aid from where we should be. The building aid increased again. And then you can see it kind of levels off after that for the next two years and it's just getting us caught up on our aid for this current project and where we are. Everything else is pretty much status quo from where we thought we would be. Those again are based on what we're hearing out there and as well as our past trends and predictions that we've seen. Breakdown of our revenues for Amherst specifically. We have the greater piece of the pie is based on property tax levy. Second greatest is our state aid numbers and building aid numbers. The next screen here. This is for Merrick Rural Schools and this is the percent of revenue from various sources. The blue line up here is showing the local share. And you can see that it's, it dipped down a bit, but now it's starting to go back up. And the reason it dipped down here in 2008, '09 is that's when we got the jobs fund money. Many of you might recall, we were quite a bit of that. That was a one-time thing that school districts got. The state share, you can see, it went up because of the jobs fund or the federal, this jobs fund, sorry. But then it drastically declined here. This is when gap elimination went into effect. So it's just interesting to see as time goes on. Now, this is up until '13. You know, that we're, this local share is becoming greater and greater. The state share is, has been declining. Federal's been pretty steady and we don't get too much from the federal sources. We do have some grants and things like that, but not too much. Mainly the local and state share is the greatest source. On the expenditure side of the budget, personnel, we're still waiting on some retirements. We don't have all of our retirements known. Contractually, we have, employees have until February 15th to make the district aware of that. So these projections do not include any retirements or breakage from those retirements or any personnel restructuring with positions and things like that. What we do know though in the benefit area is TRS, they've announced that they are recommending districts to plan for a 12% increase for 1617. That's a slight decrease, it's 13.2% currently. And so that's a slight decrease to our budget. Again, the other pieces, we're still working on getting information. Transportation, we did look at that. With the reconfiguring recently of those small buses, we were able to save some money in that. So we've reflected that in this budget as well. So our projected expenditures. Right now, at this time, they're projected to go up 3.27% for 1617. And you can see 3.69 and 3.9% for the year's draft, based on the assumptions that we have at this point. Right now, with the expenditures, we don't know of our BOCs expenses and services that are needed for next year as of yet. We're going to be meeting with those folks pretty soon. Health insurance is another piece. Workers' comp, we just got some information on that, so we're analyzing that piece as well. So those are yet to come on the expenditure side. Breakdown of our expenditures, you can see roughly about 75% is of personnel and benefits. And that's pretty typical for a school to throw. So right now, where we are, if you compare our revenues to expenditures, for 1617, we're looking at an $819,918 budget gap for 1617. We're holding out hope that gap elimination and the legislature will come through. We'll get that remaining $500,000 in gap elimination, hopefully. And all of the other advocacy efforts that are going on for us, the foundation aid piece, et cetera, et cetera. But you can see the 1718 and 1819, higher at this point, 2.7, 3.9. Truly, for 1617, the gift was additional building aid. Being able to get that in and getting that caught up. Some gap elimination also helped with bringing that down. So we hope it continues the gap elimination adjustment. so we hope it continues the gap elimination adjustment. Can I take any questions at this point? Still a lot of unknowns at this point in time.
The revenues from the state that you used, are you pretty solid that those are the numbers that we will be getting, or are those projected numbers?
That is the governor's proposal right now. Now, in the past, going back years ago, it was typical that the governor's proposal would come out, and then the legislative proposal would come out, and the legislative proposal would be better for school districts. Now, the past couple of years, it's been very different, obviously. Basically, what we got from the governor is what we got from the legislature. But going back a few years ago, that was the trend. We would see an improvement with the legislative proposal. So I know, like I said, there's so many groups out there that are advocating, including the Commissioner of Education, you know, advocating for that gap elimination adjustment to be fully restored. That would help so many school districts. The majority of school districts would be helped if that was restored.
One of the key pieces is the adjustments in the tax cap to turn what is very small growth into an actual negative figure. We have to be involved in advocacy. The legislature's now has put school districts into a position where maintaining program really depends upon their actions. I'll turn to local taxpayers. And I think in election year and in a year when the tax cap hits so many districts in that manner, advocacy efforts will be effective. So encourage the entire community to be coming up. And we'll talk with the board a little bit more about some programs coming up.
Yeah, just one other. So the numbers, the '16 and '17, right? That includes a negative tax levy, those numbers?
Yes. Yes. That includes a negative tax levy. And we haven't talked about any fund downs or reserves or anything like that either, so that's not reflected in there. Thank you.
Thank you. More to come as the months go on. All right, now we'll move to new business. Do I have a motion to accept new business?
I'll make a motion for new business items H1A2H, 2A2I.
Do I have a second? Is that what? I go down now? Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Are there any follow-up items?
I have just warned from the hearing our widowers of veterans eligible to the veterans' tax exemption.
I have one also. And I know as a board, you've been meeting regularly as the hiring of a new superintendent moves forward. But if anyone has any interest, if anyone's a real go-down for punishment, BOCES is looking for nominations for their board, and it is possible to serve on both the local board and the BOCES board. If there's any interest to be nominated, please let me know. Good?
I'm sure we'll all be lining up at your office tomorrow for that.
Well, maybe another year, but that's the problem with the tough... Thank you for reminding us of that, very important function. All right, do I have a motion to convene to executive session, or adjourn?
I will make a motion to convene to executive session if matters regarding discussing employment of a specific individual and contracts with specific individuals.
Do I have a second? Mr. Viegula, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Juanma, for coming. I appreciate your interest and dedication.